One more off tonight. I think the SEC has easily supplanted what an ACC did and just, I think you look at the coaches in that league. And, you know, it's like a team right now in Old Man that's getting ready to play Michigan State. I mean, they have really no tradition whatsoever, but they went and got first beard. And here they are, a 2016 for the first time since 2001. So I think the league has gotten good coaches, excellent players, and paying. So I think they're going to be here to stay.
It really is incredible. Some of these coaches, you put them anywhere, and some guys just know how to win the games. It is simply incredible. I wanted to ask you, Scott, and I don't know because this news kind of all came out like yesterday, and there hasn't been a whole lot of chatter with this Players' Era Festival, and that they're going to expand this to 18 teams for next season. But in 2026, this new PEF, not to be confused with the Saudi PIF, right? Too many, too many acronyms going on out here. But this PEF tournament is looking to expand to a whopping 32 teams so that we would bookend the college basketball season with a massive tournament to begin it, and obviously March Madness, this massive spectacle to end it. What do you make of all of these schools and this idea that, hey, we're going to begin the season with a giant NCAA tournament-esque sort of venture here in which the players are going to be paid to play in this thing? And they've got commitments from some massive schools, including Alabama, Auburn, Baylor, Creighton, the Zags, Houston, Iowa State, Kansas, Michigan, Notre Dame, Oregon, Rutgers, San Diego State, St. John's, Houston, Tennessee, Texas A&amp;M, St. Joe's. I mean, this thing is just like the tournament, but in November.
I think it's outstanding. I think that the NCAA has to realevaluate the college basketball season as it is. And the only thing I would say is do something like this in January, because when we get into November, and I know that's what the FPL tournament usually takes place, right around Thanksgiving weekend, we're all, everybody's watching the game, or you're watching your team, Big Ten country, or SEC country, or wherever. Get ready for the tournament, the 12-team playoff. Basketball is kind of in the back end of things. I think this will bring it up early in the season, no question, when it expands. But I think when, if you look at the Crown Tournament that's going to go on here, I think next week out in Vegas, and most of the teams just turned it down or didn't want to have, you know, have their coaches hired and didn't want to participate. But if you're to have that the last week of January in Vegas, I think players would love to do that, kind of break up the season, have this week-long tournament out in Vegas. But I do like this idea because I think the sport kind of needs these different thoughts and processes rather than just games early, some games that just basically get blown out by football. I mean, you look at like the third Saturday in December where you'll have like Kentucky playing Carolina, and it's against some bowl in Alabama, it gets doubled up in ratings. It's just, I love the idea of doing something different, and I think players will as well because they're in the game.
Yeah, Scott, some people said that Coach Izzo went on a rant the other day. I don't think so. I think what he said, he spoke truth. My question to you is, do you think, do you think other coaches will start kind of taking his point of view, meaning coach these guys up that you have in your locker room, worry about these transfer portal guys later, but coach the guys that you have up there? Do you think these coaches might take that? Or do you think it's already out the bag? The genie's already out the bottle, and it's too late to put them back in there?
I think this is a really tough sport. I think it's tougher than football when it comes to the portal because, you know, it is kind of transient by nature, and there's only five players who play at one time. So a lot of these players are looking for their next paycheck. And so it is going to be difficult. But however, to the question Tom Izzo has had, that, yeah, he sounds a little old school, well, he's 70, and he's been around for a long time. And you look at the success that he's had, it's unparalleled in the name of the Big Ten history. And he's always been that tough.
Call the meeting to order. Tonight, we're having a work session for the Board of Trustees. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Brinker, could you please call the roll?
Supervisor Breeze?
Here.
Clerk Brinker here. Treasurer Eber?
Here.
Trustee Allen?
Here.
Trustee Chapman?
Here.
Trustee Jones?
Here.
Trustee Killian?
Here.
At this time, we're going to have public forum. If you come up to the podium, please state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to talk. So whoever would like to address the board first?
My name's Edward Smith, former supervisor of Brownstown Township. I reside at 19116 Parkwood Lane. You were installed in office November the 20th, 2024. 12 days later, on December the 2nd, very first meeting, very first item on the agenda was forming a commission to get you a raise. 12 days. What have you done in 12 days that you deserve a raise? Bring in $5.5 million like I did, then come and see us. When does the raise going to affect us, what I'd like to know? Get auto-approved, assuming the board does nothing to turn it down? I've heard comments about 20 minutes, 20 years, rather, inflation. You're the only one on the board that has been there 20 years but not serving in one capacity. And please don't not mention healthcare. Healthcare's a big thing. There's too many people in the township that are working full-time and can't afford healthcare. So don't act like you don't get it. I was criticized when I stood up and talked about what I had posted. Some of you criticized me. However, what I did not hear was anybody justifying why they deserved the raise. Stand up and tell the people who you expect to pay for those raises why you do, why you need them? And what more you intend to do? Do you intend to work more hours? What is it? The other aspect of it is there are ramifications for all this kind of stuff. What are you doing to the township manager? He's got to sit with the unions and go through raises with them. I'm an XUAW official. I can tell you right now that if this went through, I'd be sitting there saying, I can't wait till unions come in, because there's going to be ramifications to this. So I'm hoping the board does the right thing and vote it down. If you don't, get up and say why you deserve it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else?
Next, we have Barb Smith.
I'm just here to yield my time in case anybody gets cut off like last time.
As are we.
I'll just say it on the.
Okay. Next, we have a, I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher this, Walter.
Yeah, that would be Walter.
Okay, thank you. Sue Harris?
I just got my phone.
You might want to time it. We might, you know, cut you off.
I just didn't want it to be.
That's okay.
Okay, let me get my glasses down. My name is Suzanne Harris. I live at 20398 Gibraltar Road. I'm a 73-year-old senior citizen, widowed and retired. I'm a tax-paying homeowner and registered voter. As a former trustee from 2000, 2008, and being on the zoning board of appeals from 2004 to 2008, I attended conferences between 2001 and 2008. I better educated myself going to those conferences. In fact, this is the week of MTA conferences. Apparently, none of you went. And I picked up a lot of knowledge. I sat there for eight years, that chair for four years, zoning board. Have any of you attended the MTA conferences?
Yes.
Okay. Are you a certified clerk?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I'm IPMC.
Okay. I guess I was a little confused why this was like a first agenda item for you people. You know, I know it's the odd year. Six of you had an opportunity for years to do an odd year, '21, '23. I know if this goes through, this salary doesn't take effect until January 26, according to, you know, salary compensation. I'm just hoping decisions are made in the best interest of the township. I knew, I know you all knew what the salaries were when you ran for office. I was satisfied at the time with the many hours that I put in, you know, because I was here a lot. I was negotiating teams, different things, and I was satisfied with that. Maybe what the township might want to do is hold an annual township meeting where you have more electors that come at a more casual pace, you know, to voice our concerns. I have concerns where I live. I gave a lot of information to Mr. Chapman before the election regarding Gibraltar Road, which I will hopefully be able to get on an agenda and have some of us speak on that where I live. How did these people apply for the salary compensation commission? Were the, I mean, who brought these people forward? Is there, was there a list to sign up on for that commission? I'm just asking a question.
We'll discuss that.
When they were talking 20 years ago, the last time the salary compensation got together was in 2007, maybe 2009. And at that time, when they raised those salaries just a little bit, they felt that because it was part-time temporary positions, election years move along, so does the Board of Trustees, that those were sufficient salaries. And when you're making comparisons, I don't think you can make comparisons like dollar-to-dollar, you know, what.
We have 10 seconds.
What townspeople and people make. I think it's more on the job duties because, say, the supervisor, we have an assessor, so she doesn't do the assessing. We have a township manager.
Okay, it's time. Mr. Attorney? Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Well, I think that's circumventing the public. I think what you need to do is rethink this. I think you need to reject these salaries and do, maybe do something at the end of this year, going into January. I think it just kind of looks bad at the public that, you know, you just came into office, you're asking for salaries, where in the budget is it going to be?
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I have a Mr. Tom Lassen.
My name is Tom Lassen. I reside at 22189 Bremer Court. Thank you for letting me come up and talk. One of the things I wanted to ask was why these meetings aren't more publicized. You see, there aren't very many people here. I found out about it through a flyer that was up in the community center. If the people of Brownstown knew about this, I think they would come out and voice their opinion. I feel as though the raises that you're asking for are ludicrous. And I'm 70 years old, I've never heard of a union or anybody asking a company for raises of 30%, 60%, 133%. How do you justify these types of raises when you're working part-time? Even if you're working full-time, the percentage of raises that you're asking for is far and away ridiculous. And I'd like to know what your answer to that is. Who decided, who decided for the figures? Who came up with the figures that they were going to?
We'll discuss that when everyone's.
When it's open.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, I have a, is it Ron or Tom McEwen? Sorry about that, I couldn't read the writing. That's close.
I'm Thomas McEwen. I live at, in Del Webb, 26278 Higgins Way. I think I've met some of you. That was my question. I thought this is an open meeting, correct? And that usually when you have an open meeting, you have to publish to the public that you're having a meeting and what you're going to discuss, and kind of what's on the agenda. And I just, as a citizen of Brownstown, I didn't get anything in the mail, I didn't see anything public in the newspaper or anything else. Usually when you talk about budgets or you have open meetings, you're supposed to publicize it so the people know, and those that want to show up. And I'm here tonight in some way to just ask, or have you kind of tell me as a citizen, because if you raise, if you raise anything, whether it's salaries for yourself, or you get more expenses, or you raise salaries for those who protect us, you eventually, your budget, which was based on last year, is not going to cover this year. So you'd have to raise the budget. And so my question, after you raise the budget, ultimately, the citizens who pay taxes are going to have to pay more money. That's the way life works. So my question for you, and I guess it's going to be answered, is first of all, in the future, can you publicize the meeting better? I think that's a duty that every board that has open meetings is required to do, both legally as well as just something you should do. And then secondly, I'm assuming you're going to answer the questions tonight about how this came about, how you formed a commission to look at salaries, what you did, and what your plan is. And then also, from a budgetary standpoint, if you decide to accept all this, I'm assuming this wasn't a budget item before last year, and so you must pass the budget, and so how you're going to pay for it this year coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll reset it for the next person. Okay, I have a Mr. Roland. Ronald, Roland?
My name is Roland Leal. I reside at 18139 Wilson Court. Many of the questions I had have already been asked. My only comment is, and I think it's already been mentioned, as a first agenda item, I think this is really poor timing. And it, I believe, as others have said, it should have been more publicized. I would have liked to have known. I came here only, the only reason I really did come here is because I didn't know anything about it prior to, this is already happening. And I did go to the website to find the agenda for tonight, but otherwise, I wouldn't have known that this meeting was occurring. And I just think from optics, it doesn't look good. And I just wanted to express that. And I hope that a lot of the questions that were already asked, which is questions I had, are going to be answered here shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't have anybody else. Anyone else in the audience like to come on up?
Good evening. Algra's Gore. I live at 17539 Snapdragon. 20-year resident here, very supportive of Brownstown. When the police were looking for extra support for additional funding for additional officers, I was paramount in trying to do that in our sub and pushing that. I'm unit vice president for Dearborn Police, and I'm aware of contracts and percentages and such. I just think this is something that should be tabled and talked about a little bit more, and maybe doing stages. The percentages are kind of out of whack for the public, and I just think we need to take more time and look at it. I'm very supportive of the township. I like what we do here. I just think everyone needs to take a step back and look at it a little more.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Anyone else have anything to say? Sure.
John Santoro, Bishop Road, just off King. Until last week, I was unaware of the commission ways recommendation. So I'm kind of new at all this, I know everybody here on the board. And my only thing, my concern was, since I wasn't aware of it, there may be a lot of other people in the community that also aren't aware of it. Is this something that we vote on or just rely on your judgment? That's about it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question.
Sure, come on up.
Hi. My name's Stephanie Tuskovich. I reside at 24680 Groveland Drive. I have been there for close to 30 years. And my question, I guess, would be, once these questions that you'll be addressing that everyone else has had, will there be an opportunity for additional comments? There might be some of us who would have additional comments once you all have to, once you address the questions which have been put towards the board.
So are you asking if you have more questions after we discuss it? Can you be addressed?
Yes, or comments.
Can I do that? Come on under. Okay, thank you.
I would suggest that.
We follow Robert's rules of orders with our meetings, and that's what, you know, he's referring to.
Okay, so that can be a possibility if anyone would have additional comments once
I would highly recommend that.
Thank you.
I think that would be a very kind thing to do. Thank you.
I have things to say, but I, I can be last or interject, so who would like to start here? Not me.
I can start. Just to address some of the questions raised by the residents. I understand that there's some concerns about publicizing the meetings and them not being published and stuff. The Brownstown Compensation Ordinance that was presented by the supervisor on December 2nd, its ordinance 319, it follows the laws that we, as a township, are governed by, which include MCL 4195 and the Charter Township Act, 359 of 1947. Our notifications and public postings for the establishment of this commission and the meeting dates and minutes were all posted publicly in strict compliance with the Open Meetings Act. So we follow that law to a T. The Compensation Commission meetings were advertised and posted, just like we post for our Planning Commission, our ZBA, our board meetings, our Election Commission, et cetera. They were on our website, on our cable channel. They were physically posted two places in our lobby with 24-hour access. They were sent to the rec department to post in the community center, and they were published in the newspaper. So there's, we're not trying to hide those. That's how we do all of our meetings. That's how we've done it. So that's how every meeting was addressed. This is not the first time these meetings have come up. We talked about them at a meeting on December 2nd. On December 8th, those minutes were published in the paper and posted in those places. January 6th, we had a second reading of the ordinance. January 12th, those minutes were published. And February 3rd, that's when we had another meeting and we appointed the commission. Thank you. So the procedure was started on December 2nd, and then it followed those. So this isn't, this is kind of just a way. And I know sometimes it's difficult, but all of the information for meetings, whether it's Planning Commission or Board, it's all on our website. You should be able to find it. If you have any problems finding anything, you can absolutely give us a call, and we can kind of guide you through the website. It also runs on the cable channel and in the newspaper. I know a lot of people don't read the newspaper anymore, but they are published in the newspaper as well.
Is that all you want to?
I have other things, but we can, we can talk. I mean, I can go ahead with what I got to say.
Anyone?
Okay, I guess I can finish. So I was one of the board members that called this special meeting to give us an opportunity to discuss and to address some questions that have come up regarding this Compensation Commission and the recommendation that sits in front of this board. I've gotten lots of questions from residents, and I just wanted to, an opportunity to provide some factual information for those who are asking and for those who are interested. While there are many differences between the two, both cities and townships can form a Compensation Commission to review salaries and propose salary increases. And as required by statute, the commission is made up of five Brownstown tax-paying residents. The commission was appointed by us, and they did the job they were supposed to do. They were appointed to do a job, and they did it. They looked at salary history, comparable communities, rate of inflation, cost of living, statutory job duties, and responsibilities for each board. Jeff, you have to put that up there. Thanks. For each board position.
I'd like to see what he has.
It's, okay. It's hard to explain without. They made a fair, comparable, and equitable recommendation. They did their homework, and they came prepared to the meeting. The township board hasn't had a raise in over 20 years. Okay? As a matter of fact, the salaries of your board were higher in 2002 than they are now. There's no dispute that, from anyone, that the cost of everything today is more than it was 20 years ago. I agree with the commission that we must.
I'm giving some feedback in the audience. Can you please keep it down? Thank you.
So I agree with the commission that we must address the salaries of your elected officials today. I mean, not today, but today, so that we aren't sitting here 20 more years from now and saying, wow, now we have 40 years of stagnant wages that we must address. So I did a lot of research on this, right? It takes, it's a lot to go in front of a commission and to go in front of the residents and try to advocate for yourself. Before I did all the research into this, I would think that would be really far-fetched to go 20 years without a raise. But if you look at the law, you can see how it could happen. The Compensation Commission doesn't meet again until 2027, and any salary changes made at that time wouldn't go into effect until 2028. If the board doesn't approve the current recommendations now, we will be instantly three years into the future without raises. And if they choose not to act in 2027, that would add three more years, and you can see how these years could easily add up. I truly appreciate all the residents who have reached out to me or to my office to gather the facts. The township has grown exponentially in 20 years. Our duties and responsibilities have increased significantly due to this growth. Our population has increased almost 45% just since 2000, since the 2000 census. The number of registered voters has skyrocketed to over 27,000 people. Recent laws have been passed that increase the duties of the clerk's office tenfold. There are strict accountability and stiff penalties for even the slightest mistake. In addition to our regular office duties, we are now working early voting nine days straight and then going right into Election Day without a single day off. And for many large elections, that's a 19-day straight run of long hours with no days off. It's a significant amount of work. So again, I truly appreciate everyone that's reached out to me and to the board members to gather information and talk about things. We are, my office, this board is being transparent. Any information we have is available to you as well as residents. I have been met with nothing but positive reactions and support once people realize the intricacies of township government, the compensation process, the salary history, and the fact that the salary presented by the Compensation Commission is fair and shows that these positions are valued and the duties and responsibilities are appreciated and are important. That's all I have for right now. Anyone else?
Come on, Mr. Eber. I know you're fighting your tongue.
Well, I'm going to give my perspective on this. And this is really difficult because I like the board members. I like Ed, our former supervisor. In fact, those of you who follow local politics, two years ago, I was his champion on the board. I was the interim chairperson after our supervisor resigned, and I championed Ed to be our supervisor. I was the interim chairperson after our supervisor resigned, and I championed Ed to be our supervisor. And it was a battle. It wasn't easy, meeting after meeting after meeting, and we're coming across a deadline that if we didn't decide, it would go to the state level. That's never happened in Michigan, and I was damn not going to let it happen, us being the first. And I really felt I, my fear was, I was crossing lines with board members, maybe people who I liked may not like me as much, because it got heated. I will say that didn't happen, and I thank you to everybody, because I really thought, oh, boy, I'm going to come here, and I'm, you know, we got Ed in, and the rest of them are going to be upset with me. And I appreciate the fact that they understood I was trying to do what I thought was best. When Ed ran for supervisor, I was on his side, against Ms. Beres. I was sitting to my right. I've known Ms. Beres as long as I've been elected, which is 16 years. My first campaign, she was the one who walked me door to door. We teamed up, and she walked me. And I explained to Ms. Beres, you know, I thought Ed was an outsider, I thought that was good. There's a lot of reasons I gave her, and she didn't like it, but she agreed. That do what you think's best, and I appreciate that. And again, I was concerned, what would happen if Ms. Beres won? How would I be treated? And I will say, she's treated me great. Just like Ed, she calls me on all big decisions, all concerns. You'll note that the supervisor, the clerk, and the treasurer, as the officers, there's lots of discussions we have among ourselves before it comes to the board. Things come up, you are not in our own department. I've had the clerk reach out to me on something exclusively in her jurisdiction. Like, what do you think about this? And that's what we do, we rely on each other, and nothing's changed. I thought maybe it would, Ms. Beres calls me all the time to say, I've got something I want to go over with you, and I appreciate that. I felt no, not that I expected it, but, you know, human nature, I thought there'd be some of that. So somebody asked, why did this, why was this on the first meeting after the election? Some of the trustees came to me and said, you know, Mike, we get paid $7,500 a year, and we do a lot of things. You have a staff. We all have staffs, the officers, we do. If I'm trying to reach somebody, and they don't answer my call, I have a deputy, I can say, follow up with this. Now, I come in four days a week. I come in Monday through Thursday, I'm here. I have to, because I get to approve the bills. So if I don't come in, the bills don't get paid. So I come in there four days a week, and on Fridays, sometimes they have bills, sometimes they don't. If they do, I got to look at them. But I have staff, they don't. And I will tell you, our trustees do a lot of work, and when I was a trustee, Art Wright was the supervisor. I asked him, how do I get information? He said, well, you come here and you go to people, and you got to do it yourself, and you do. And I know they do, because when I took, when we took over, I think Sherry was still on the board all those years ago, the property values plummeted, if you recall, right? I moved to Brownstown 20-some years ago, and as soon as I bought my house, the property values went down. We're funded, townships, two ways, two big ways. We get statutory revenue sharing from the state, like all communities, and we get property taxes. Our property taxes went down, we lost a million dollars the first year I got allowed, a million dollars. We're in a hole, we had no rainy day fund, a million dollars. We had to find a million dollars' worth of cuts, right? And we did, and we took away things from people. The unions worked with us, but we took away things, which was really tough, because a promise made should be a promise kept. So since that time, our property values, the revenue we generate from property values, only three years ago, are back to where they were 16 years ago. That's how long it's taken. Since that time, our rainy day fund has $20 million in it right now, 15 million in the general fund, from zero. That's savings in case something goes. I'm going from memory, so our budget, or just forget the police and fire for a minute, our budget, that would cover almost two years, if something, a calamity happened, a year and eight months, we would be able to run the township just on our rainy day fund. It lowered our bond rating, that's a big deal. Our credit went up, our bond ratings come way down. So when we borrow, we have about 17 million in long-term debt. When we borrow for big projects, like infrastructure, the state's doing telegraph, it's not our road, guess what? All the pipes underneath, we want to redo them. We want to put multiple connections in case it's a break. We borrow for those, those are big-ticket items. 17 million's a lot of money. We talk to our auditors every year, Plant, Moran, we're way under any community. It's much bigger for most communities than that. They say we should borrow more, but we don't need to, thank God. So this, there've been different boards over the years that have done this. We work very hard, we're very number-driven, and we improve services. Our fire department has new trucks. We came up with plans to replace our chiefs. In the past, it just happened, and we were like, what do we do? We have no system in place to replace them, now we do. Our police, you know that we came back and said, we want more men and women on the streets. Nothing equipment, no overhead, men and women on the streets, we've done that. So this board's done a very good job. I just want you to know, because people don't know, we had a gentleman here last year that said, we bought a $90,000 police vehicle, and I remember sitting here, and I thought, did we? I approve, I see these bills, I know what the minutes say. We had a $30,000 one, but I was, I didn't want to say too much, because as my wife says, I can be wrong. But I thought, that's not right. After the meeting, I said, what's going on with this? And he was wrong, but he believed it, he was being sincere, he wasn't lying. But people misunderstand, they don't see the numbers day-to-day like we do. So we're very healthy. Our water, you know, when you pay your tax bills, I know I go along, but I think when you pay your tax bill, summer and winter, 25 cents of every dollar goes to Brownstown. Police, fire, all the things that we do, 25 cents of every dollar. The other 75 cents, schools, the county, the state, we're the collectors. So it's on your bill, and my name's on that bill, but 25 cents on every dollar, that's it, right? So we've checked, where are we as far as our mileage compared to other communities? And the last time we did it, a couple of years ago, we were the third lowest. And when I say Downriver, it included, like Dearborn, Allen Park, you know, it was bigger than Downriver, the third lowest. I know one of the lower ones, I don't remember the three, but like Rockwood, they have a part-time, you know, they're not full-time fire and police. So we were really proud of that, that everything we offer is the third lowest. Our water bills, we've looked at that. Now, a lot of these bills get passed down, right? We're part of a system, they dictate. We are one of the lowest communities, even though I'm at an age, I'm in my 60s, I look back, well, my kids are like, Dad, you always say that. Well, when we moved here, my water bill was only this for three months, right? I have three girls. They turn the shower on two hours before they go in, right? So it's a lot higher because of usage, but the price has gone up. We're still one of the lowest communities. Why are we? There's two big reasons. One is where we are. When water flows downhill, it's cheaper, it's part of, how do you get water from one place to the other? We're in a good location, Brownstown specifically, so we get the benefit of that. The next big one is leakage. They send you so much water, but you got to pay for, but you may not use it, it's leaking through pipes. That's why whenever we do a road, whether it's county or state, we're in there in the pipes. We want to see what the pipes look like, we're fixing those leakages, because our leakage is very low, and that makes a huge difference. You think leakage sounds small, that adds up. And because of that, our rates are lower than a lot of surrounding communities. These are the kind of details we get into, because we've had people who've been here a long time, they may leave, but they help new people coming in. So, and they learn these things. As I learned it from somebody else, right? I didn't pick this up, other people showed me the ropes, and now I can show others. So we're a very healthy financial community, we've done a lot of good, our property values have gone up, our population has risen. A lot of people want to be here, they like our location, we have a lot of stores nearby, but not in our neighborhoods, which is kind of a good thing, right? We can go shopping, but we're not having a big bunch of office buildings set up right in your backyard, and we try to keep that. Is it perfect? No, it's not. Now, with regards to how this came up, a lot of background. Last year, the trustees, some of them asked about an increase. I think trustees, I think that's an open, I said I would support looking at that. We didn't do it last year, and I thought about it, because there was a lot of animosity between Ed, our former supervisor, and some of the board members, there was. And I tried to play peacekeeper. They will all attest that I called each of them to say, stop it. Let bygones be bygones, we got to get along, and it was very hard, and it wasn't successful. So nothing was going to happen. So Ed lost the election, we have a new supervisor, things have calmed down, and they said, can we have that looked at? And I supported the trustees, right? Just the trustees, I'm just being upfront, let's look at it. Then there was a discussion, how to best do it, in a wage commission, a third party, not us. I don't know, you know, there's pros and cons to that. Because who's on it, like all your questions? What are they looking at? How long are they looking at? I don't like losing control. Even if it's bad news, I want to be in control, and I, every commission, you're like, oh, you're not in control, you're not part of it. But the thought was, let somebody else look at it. Now, I was, so we did. Shame on me, this is where I think, I didn't quite understand the wage commission. What they can do, how fast they can do it. In my mind, I'm thinking it'd be multiple meetings, maybe a work session with them, things of that nature. And it happened in two meetings, about an hour long. I heard about it from social media, just like most everyone. I read it, I was fuming, I was really upset. I had members call me, and I didn't answer my phone, because I, I'm like, ah. And I'm not going to say who the first one I answered, but that person got an earful, right? And I apologized afterwards, because they're not responsible, just the first one, I kicked the dog, so to say. But I did talk to a number of board members. I'm not in support of it, and I don't want to pick on the commission, because I'm sure they're fine people. I don't know any of them personally, but I'm sure they're fine people. But I do feel, I get inflation, I get what other people may or may not be paid. But here's the thing, we are a service, this is a service we do, we're part-time. I have a staff, my staff has gotten bigger. Why has it gotten bigger? Our population's gone up. My job is to manage them, right? I'm not in the trenches. My staff won't even let me touch the money that comes in, I'm the treasurer. I get a report that says how much money, and I'm a lawyer too, so that may be part of it. But they won't let me, you know, I get reports. The clerks added people to her because she needed it. We talked about the cost, how do we do it, so they could better do their job. We are part-time, at least the three officers, and I do believe it's a service, right? It's almost like volunteerism, because we are part-time. I think that's important. I make more money at my job than I do here. Every time I'm here, not every time, but sometimes I think, well, this was a long meeting, I would have made X dollars if I just stayed at the office. But that's part of what you do. If you want to do a service job, those are the commitments, you're away from your family, and that's the reality. So I made it clear, when I saw that, I didn't like it, so everyone knows, last meeting, council meeting, I made sure, I made a motion with support, it's on the next agenda, before that automatic timeline expires, there's going to be a vote on it, right? It's not just going to happen. Somebody asked, if we don't do something, it'll happen, there'll be a vote. It's already going to be there, and I'm going to send in the wording I'd like. I checked with our attorney, we can vote line item, so we could vote supervisor, clerk, treasurer, and trustees. So I'm letting everyone know, I'm inclined to support the trustees' determination, right? I am. When I was asked, before the elections, about it, in my mind, really quick, I thought, what would I, what's the number? And my number was 12,000, and I'll tell you how I did it. I said 72 divided by 2, and 72 divided by 3. The rule is 72, if inflation's 2%, that's how many years to double, if it's 3%, that's how many years. And when I did that, it's 20 or 30 years, I said, okay, I'm going with the lesser one, smaller number, and it was around 12 grand, right? You double seven five, it's 15, it wasn't quite 20 years, I said 12. That was just my real quick thinking of, I'd be okay with that range. And so when I saw that, that I wasn't upset about. So I'm letting everyone know, I've made it clear, if the trustees want it, I don't even know they do, but if they did, I'd support that. Just telling everyone right now. I don't support any others for the reasons I stated. But I do think the clerk, she did, she did do it right. I mean, she followed the rules of how all our meetings are done. And I will say, I get lots of notices and emails for things I, just endless, every day. I've got it now on my phone, I can look at it wherever I'm at, all kinds of notices. I didn't get all of these notices, though, this time around. Has it happened before? It has, there's other times it's happened. I'm on a court council for all the communities. Occasionally, I don't get it. Something goes wrong, it's in spam, right? So it's not the first time. But I get people's frustration, because I felt the same way. That Saturday, I was like, wait a minute, why don't I know what's going on? Again, I'm a bit of a control freak on that, and I was upset because of it. But the board, I don't think did anything wrong, I think it was all good intentions, they wanted to look at it. I think it took a life of its own, that the people got in there, I would have spent much more time on it, and I don't approve the three officers at all. I think we get paid enough for what we do, I think we knew when we elected. I don't think it's wrong that some of them might think they should get more, I don't think that's immoral, I don't think it's a bad thing. And I will say, with Mr. Smith, I did feel a little bit, and I consider him a friend, when I saw the posting, my wife saw it, and when she showed it to me, I felt it was, I'm okay with posting what you hear, I want to hear things. I don't, if people don't like what we do, and I want to know that, because maybe, as my wife said, we're wrong sometimes. I want to know that. But when Ed posted that, I did have a feeling of attack, that some of the animosity that was in the board, when we, before the election, I felt that. I read it, and he's a friend, and I respect him, you know, he talked about health insurance. When we were funding the retiree health insurance, it's, we have a plan, 16 years we worked on it. Thank you to all the union members and leadership, we got that. We're probably the only community I know of where we're funding these things. When we were talking about it, though, we didn't know we'd get a plan and how it would work, we've been working on it for 16 years, as long as I've been elected. And we talked, Ed specifically, and I remember he said this, we talked about, well, what about elected officials that get health insurance? What about that? It was talked about, and there was other things, lots of things we talked about. Now, they don't anymore, we changed the rules a long time ago, but those of us who've been here a long time, and Ed said something like, look, our role is, we don't take things, promises made should be promises kept, unless it's a fiscal crisis, like it was 16 years ago. Because I felt bad 16 years ago, what some of the things we had to do. And he said, if we have the wherewithal, we keep our promises, we just don't make, keep making the same mistake twice. Stop digging at some point, right? So then when you attack that, to make it sound like what's going on, you weren't the supervisor, and we talked about that, and you said some good things, and I thought, I felt bad when you said it, because I thought I didn't do that. You know, it was promises made, we didn't keep 16 years ago, because we couldn't. But I did feel bad about it, it refreshed my recollection, I wish we could have done more then. So I do think there was a little bit of hostility in there, and I know why, I know what was going on when you were the supervisor, and I didn't like it, the hostilities toward you at times, but it went two ways a number of times, I didn't like any of it. We need to be able to disagree, but not be disagreeable. So that's it, I wanted to give you a little history, you know, it's always with our finance, our finances are great. Really are, you know, better than they've ever been, period. When we have Plant and Moran here, you could come in and they'd do a whole presentation. They're excellent, and we've got big plans, and we're solving problems that you don't even know about, because they're not problems yet. We're already looking ahead of, what can we do? What are things that we see, that we hear from citizens? And we're looking at all of that. And everybody works very hard, and we don't always agree, but we try not to be disagreeable. But in conclusion, I'm just letting you know, I'm going to support, if the trustees want it, they, some of them express concerns, but I think it warrants, it's just with inflation, not quite inflation, and it's less than our employees got as a percentage. But I would consider that, but I'm not going to, I'm going to be against, I'll be making a motion, not for the supervisor, treasurer, or clerk, and that's a part why, I didn't know that we had the meeting, it was posted. But I wouldn't make a presentation. If I were there, I wouldn't, I could. You know, we say, I mentioned at our office, my deputies, we are now getting an extra $120,000 of revenue per month since December, million and a half dollars a year, no taxation on that, using sweep accounts. Our money is swept from our banks at 5:00 PM, out into interest-bearing guaranteed funds, and swept back in at a start of business, and for that privilege, other banks get to use our money, we earn that kind of interest now every month. What can that be for? Roads, things, you know, we're going to talk about that. We just, we pinch ourselves, we just want to wait a few more months, because it's been happening, but we'll have things to do, maybe fund some of the pension a little bit faster, right? Some of the health insurance. So there, but every department, everybody here, I mean, we hear about these all the time, you don't hear about, I'm bringing this up, because that's my department, because I got your ear. But we hear it, I hear it, from every one of these people will come up and tell me something, I'm like, this is great. No, this is one, we need to do a better job letting people know the good news, because we don't talk about it. But it happens all the time, and every one of these people, when, every kind of dedication, they're there more than I am, because I still work, I'll be retiring this year, but they're there, and they show up. I do show up, and they're always there, on their time, right? They're there, and shaking, people getting to know the community, and I appreciate that, because it's time away from their family, not just doing this job, but that's the extra you got to do. So I know I spoke a long time, but I just wanted to get it out there in one sitting, so everybody heard, so thank you.
Through the chair, I just, can I just address two quick questions that the residents brought up? One was, there was, has been some talk about it being first up on the agenda, first up on the agenda. Just a quick, looking at the agenda, just because an item's number one doesn't mean it has any more value or relevance than item number two or item number three, it's just the way that our agendas are structured. For instance, in December, on the 2nd, the first reading For instance, in December, on the second, the first reading of this ordinance was item number one. And the second item was the appropriation act to adopt the budget. So adopting the budget is very important, very, very important. So I, being the item number one doesn't really, it doesn't m- mean that it's the number one thing or most important thing on the agenda. So, um, and then the second item that us, a couple of people had mentioned was maybe tabling it or waiting till the end of the year or something. Um, per the law, per the, the charter township act, per our ordinance and per the MCL, um, the compensation commission only had 30 days after, um, they were elected to, to meet. And then, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, appointed, yes. Pointed. Um, and then after they make a determination, the board, the township board has 30 days after that to either accept or reject it. So, accept or reject it.
No, we, we can reject it.
Okay. If we don't do, all right, you're right. For clarity, if we don't do anything, if it doesn't have to come in front of the board, then it, it goes into effect. Okay. So Mr. Eberth has already said he would like to see it on the agenda. It will be on the agenda for the next meeting, but there is the 30-day window. That's the reason why we can't table it. We have to follow that law. So just to, to kind of clear that up.
Correct.
Correct.
And it will.
Correct.
Am I correct?
Yes. And it. That's why Mr. Eberth wanted it on the agenda.
Yes. And that's in the MCL. That's in the charter township and our ordinance as well. So I just, you know, in, in trying to get the, the facts out for certain things like that, it's natural that questions are going to come up, right? Questions like that. We are following the law when it comes to that, you know, the 30 days, how it goes in front of the board, the postings, um, being able to table it the first item. I mean, we, we are really following the law on that. But, so I'm a very visual person, right? I like charts and graphs. I like to see things. Okay? So I was asked to compare the Brownstown clerk proposed salary with other local clerk salaries. Okay? You can throw a lot of numbers at me, but I'm a chart person. So just up there. So in this chart, you will see salaries from local municipalities around us, neighboring communities from 2023. Okay? I searched various sources online for this information and it's all public. This is what I could find. Um, I tried to pull in everything around us. And as you can see, the Brownstown Township clerk salary is at the bottom. Okay? The salary proposed by the compensation commission puts Brownstown almost directly in the middle, right in the center of the range. Okay? There is one, there are a couple outliers on this graph, right? Um, from the info I found, Southgate is under $10,000 and Dearborn and Van Buren are over $100,000, right? You've got outliers on both sides. For this chart, I included them in the average. But if you were to take those off, the needle doesn't move very far either way. Okay? If you do the numbers, you can do the numbers, you can go home and do the numbers. They're, they're there. Okay? So again, I, I'm a, a chart person. I like charts. As an extra data point, this chart shows three salaries. One is the actual Brownstown Township clerk and two are adjusted for the rate of inflation. So for context, starting in 2002, there were significant pay cuts to the clerk salary that brought it down from a high of $41,818 to the current salary of $30,500. At that time, part of the township, the entire township board salary was being paid from the water sewer fund and was tied to a water sewer commission that was abolished in 2006. And that part of the salary was never replaced for anybody, for the trustees, for the supervisor, for treasurer. It was never replaced. The blue line is the actual current salary of $30,500. And you can see it stays stagnant for almost 20 years, from 2006 to present. The red line starts at 2003, when the salary was $40,818 and is extrapolated using the actual rate of inflation data. You can see in 2025, it's right around $72,000, right? This is just rate of inflation. The dotted line starts at the last pay adjustment in 2006, which was a decrease to the current amount. Again, using actual rate of inflation, it ended up at about $49,000. So just using rate of inflation, it gives us a range of about $49,000 to $72,000 today's dollars. This correlates with the average salary of clerks in neighboring communities and it falls in line with the proposed salary from the compensation commission. Now this was something I did late last night because I was trying to think about things I wanted the public to know and the board to, to share with the board. I was only able to do it last night, but I am more than willing to do this for the trustee position, the treasurer and the supervisor. If the board would like me to do it, I can do it for you as well. I'm just a visual person. I like to look at numbers this way. I like to look at graphs and say, wow, there's a huge difference there. And if you've got, using rate of inflation, it just, it correlates with the numbers provided by the compensation commission. And again, I'm only speaking on this position because at 2:00 in the morning last night, that's all I had left in me, right? To do one, one position, but I will do the rest of them. To make a comment on it? Are we going to give them more time? So, go ahead.
One thing I would like to bring up and, and I'm talking to my fellow board members especially, the Charter Township Act does not state full-time, part-time. If you review the Charter Township Act, you do not have to sit at your desk from nine to five. You do not have to punch a time clock. And you are there for the public. Someone can call me at 10 o'clock at night and I'm going to answer that phone. And that, that has happened. I knew that going in. And my passion is this community. So I just want to strongly, strongly point out, it does not define full-time or part-time. It's a statutory position. And you can put in the amount of time you want. For example, my father chose to be the treasurer of this township full-time. In 1989, I think the treasurer was about $22,000. That's roughly the figure. Yeah. Well, we'll just go with that. So he chose to raise a family, four daughters in, he and my mother on that amount of money. Now let's go 20 years later. Here I am, clerk, single mom, three kids. How in God's name can I raise my children on $30,000 a year? Did I feel that I slighted the township? Absolutely not. Because I knew that I had a darn good deputy and a darn good staff. If I had the ability right now to do this, as everyone says, full-time, I would. But the reality is that, that's not where I'm at in my life. Another thing I want to point out is this meeting is followed by Robert's Rules of Order. We, we have strict set ways that we have to do it. If any of you have any questions, want to meet with me personally, want to meet with three of us, not four, we'll meet with you. I felt, I, I'm going to go back to what Mr. Eberth said. He said that some of the trustees had approached him and felt that they should have more money. And when I was a trustee, I was making $11,000. And we won't talk about how many years ago that was, not just this past term, but I'm talking years ago. So I made more money in the nineties than they are right now. And if any of you go to the events and, and I'm, see familiar faces, you will see these gentlemen at those events. They're here representing us, promoting Brownstown, going to other cities, sitting at their city council meetings, representing Brownstown. So I think it goes back to a public service that they want. These gentlemen know that they're not going to become millionaires. Mr. Jones didn't even know how much money the tr, the trust, the trust, what are you, trustee made when he won the election. So I just want to point that out, the part-time, full-time, why we do this. Do each of us deserve it? I'm biased. I think they do. However, I've not said that I agree or disagree with the Salary Compensation Commission. We gave them whatever information we could and they walked into it blindly. None of them had ever served on a salary compensation commission. It was all brand new. I could not sit there at the meeting and say, this is what I want. This is what I want. This is what I want. I chose not to do that. I chose to stay out of it. As Mr. Eberth said, it's an independent commission. And I felt personally, they had to make that decision. I do know, one of the commissioners, commissioners did share with me is they took the surrounding communities, the salaries that the tru, trustees made, and they came up with Mr. Eberth's number. And I thought that was a pretty fair way to go about it. I did not know what they had proposed for the three positions here prior to the, the last meeting. Is that when, in the, in the Facebook posting and, and all that other thing. Another issue that I want to strongly, strongly say here, the salary compensation is only statutorily responsible for the salaries. That is the only thing they look at. Other benefits, other perks, they, they can add, they cannot add those. Those are done elsewhere. Like Mr. Eberth said, when we were going through healthcare and the sacrifices that people made and, and the sacrifices that they're even making today. That's when those are addressed. So again, the only thing the Salary Compensation Commission looked at was the salaries. As Mr. Eberth said, the reason I felt that we should do this commission is I thought removing us from the equation and having the Salary Compensation Commission do it, following the law, like Ms. Brinker said, you have to do it within 30 days, within 15 days, within 45 days. You are on a very strict, strict timeframe. And again, knowing that we could not address this until three years later. Everyone was given a, a copy of the ordinance. It was posted. It was everywhere. I don't feel anyone on this board meant to hide it from anyone. So, uh, one thing Mike, that, that you said, and, and I thought that we had to take the recommendation totally. I did not know that we could break it apart. And I would like to ask Mr. Foley that. I was told that it would be all or nothing. All right. Well, that's something I learned tonight. I, I didn't know that. Did, is that new to you guys as well?
The, the only reason I knew is I called the attorney and asked.
Another attorney told me the opposite. So, you know, um, that's okay.
And through the chair, I, I didn't know that either. And, um, I, I was in the meetings with the compensation commission, as was trustee Jones, trustee Allen, trustee Chapman. And the commission.
I just want to correct you on that. I was only 15 minutes, like second meeting.
Okay. Oh, you're sitting behind me. So I saw you come in. Um, so the commission asked if it was, they had asked the question, is this an all or nothing? Is this, do, is we present this as a recommendation? And they were told, yes, it was presented as a recommendation. So the commission was under the belief that they were, that they could not, that the board did not have the ability to go in and cherry pick which salaries they were going to address. And on that note, I think this board has the absolute right to, to vote yes or vote no on this recommendation from the commission. But I think that splitting it will cause nothing but division amongst this board. And I, I really, I think you're picking and choosing which positions you determine should get a raise. Whether or not you agree or think the number is high or low or whatever, I think the board would be, it would be a terrible move to pick and to cherry pick which of those positions get a raise. And I, I could not sit here in good faith and pick which one of you got a raise and which one of you didn't. I would never do that to you guys. So, and I think that in addressing, Ms. Beres is absolutely correct. The discussion and focus isn't debating full-time or part-time. And to have that debate and even bring that up is misleading. It's misleading to our public. It's like Supervisor Beres said, it's not spelled out anywhere in our township ordinances, what the required hours are. We are compensated, all of us are compensated based on the duties performed by each position. Whether it takes 30 hours or 50 hours, I mean, this is an argument simply used to discount the work that this board does. Uh, the roles and the responsibilities, and I can only speak for the clerk right now, of the Brownstown clerk are the same as the clerk in any other city or township. And in fact, there are added duties about being a, being a clerk in Wayne County, such as min, administering our own elections and running our, uh, early voting. Uh, yes, it is common to have a deputy and most, if not all of the municipalities that I showed you have a deputy, or at least someone in that role under another title. So yes, we have staff.
If I can clarify you, under statute, to, under the statute of being clerk, you have to appoint a deputy. Same with.
Right. So townships have deputies.
Those two positions statutorily are required to have deputies.
Right. But it's common as well for cities and that to have somebody work underneath them.
That's why I want to interrupt you. You, you are comparing cities, townships, general law townships, charter townships. They are so different i- in how governmentally they are set up. So i- in, I don't want to say in fairness of the compensation commission, they were given charter township, townships in the state of Michigan, shown of our population and how much money each individual made.
Right.
So it's unfair, in my opinion, you cannot take the city of Woodhaven, if, I think they're a weak mayor, and put that into what we are here at a charter township of, of Brownstown.
And I agree 100% with you and the, the numbers.
I want to clarify that because it's, it's very different. And you know, if you're a home rule community or not, there's a lot. I mean, it still irritates me when someone comes up here and they says, oh, the city said, and we're not a city. We are a township and we're a charter township of Brownstown. And the people before us felt that we should be a charter township for the reasons they did. I, I know what it was, the annexation and all that. So yes, we are a charter township of, of the area and we are commissioned or governed much different than the surrounding community. So I just want to make that comment on your comparison of surrounding areas. I don't think you're being fair to yourself by comparing yourself to other communities. Do statutorily or, um, election law, you have to do the same thing as those clerks? Absolutely. I mean, I was used to joke that I'd go to, you know, clerk jail if I didn't do something and that the politicians stayed up late at night to see how they could make our life miserable. It, it is a lot, but you do have to do the same thing under the law. But again, we're different. Woodhaven, I'm just making up numbers. Woodhaven might have two precincts and we have 20.
Right.
Well, if you have two precincts over here, 20 over here, you're comparing the time and the energy that you're putting into that, it's going to be much different.
And I agree with you. And the numbers that were presented to the, to the, or that the compensation commission looked at specifically compared Brownstown Township to comparable townships. There is a chart that, that is available if anybody wants it. There's a chart that was used of our comparables. We used, it was sorted by, it had to be. We used, it was sorted by, it had to be township, had to be same population bracket, the same number of registered voters in that bracket. And that's what they used to come up with the number that they got for, and I'm just going to use myself and as an example, the clerk position, I'm not advocating for myself, I'm advocating for the clerk position. That's the number that they came up with, is what they proposed. At one of our meetings, some of the residents came up and spoke about, "Well, what about Woodhaven? What about Southgate? What about this?" I did that chart to see what those numbers would be. I am fully aware of the differences between cities and townships. That's why...
No, I know. Say that you didn't, I just want to make that.
But if you do the comparison with the townships, strictly townships, strictly the same size, the same number of registered voters in that bracket, we're way low, okay? We're still way low. But I used the comparables that I use today because some residents don't know. They don't know the difference between cities and townships. And I've been asked, "Well, what are you compared to Woodhaven? What are you compared to Trenton? What are you compared to Wyandotte?" And like Ms. Bereas said, it's not, it's apples and oranges. But that was just to show you, even if we used cities, right? Those numbers are accurate. The Compensation Commission, they did their homework. They compared our salaries to just townships? And they compared them to local municipalities? So if both of those comparables, and they also used rate of inflation, all three of those are giving them the same way, the same range of salaries, that would, that tells me something, that they're there with their numbers. And again, we were talking about full-time and part-time. You know, the job duties that we do fall in line with other townships of our size and the duties that we do. The full-time, part-time, that discussion is misleading. So don't let that blind you in, like Supervisor Bereas said, that's misleading.
Just one of the problems I had though with the commission is, we're thinking it's independent. Now, Ms. Brinker, you made a presentation there, you had a binder with information. I know the supervisors showed up at one of the meetings, none, none. Yeah, you're right. It was the trustees, but they didn't make a presentation, I didn't make a presentation, because in my mind, it was independent. Now, I could have, I could, I would have asked, "How big is our office? How many employees do we have compared to the others? Do we have more or less? We have more, you know, that makes a difference. What's our deputy make compared to the other communities? There's endless, what have you done? Not, we've done a lot, I've told you some of it in my office and others, but what have you done compared to the other communities? There's a lot of questions. If I were there, if I were going to be there for my office, and I knew this commission was going to happen, I had no indication to go in there, but I could, I'm an attorney. I could advocate, I could get numbers and say, "This is what we should make," if that were my intention. And it may be fair to get an increase. I had said after this came out, I said, "You know, even if they would have given some increase to the three of us," and I was against it. Not a big increase, but something. I was against it. And they all voted for it, and that was the last vote. I would have voted for it. Why? Because I, you know, is it a big number that's going to blow our budget and be, and do I want to stand out? I like being a team, I think it's important, I weigh the cost of, this isn't a big moral decision. It's, they think they're right, maybe I'm wrong, as my wife says. And if it's, whatever I thought was reasonable, I might have bit my tongue and went for it, even though internally I think, no. These numbers are way bigger than I, I mean, I expected zero, but they were bigger than I thought. But part of it was the supervisor wasn't there to make a presentation of what she's doing. If Ed were the supervisor, he could make the presentation. He'd say, "I got the $2 million for the event center across the street that we got from Warren Evans. I played a role in that," right? We all can do that. Every one of these people have a story they could tell you of what they did that's really good. You'd be really proud.
But you could not have, but you could not have done that without the board.
Yeah, everything, all of us, even that 125, we didn't vote on it, because it was in my, but guess what? I did call them, right? It's not a vote item, I can make the decision. But I called, I called our accountant. I wanted to make sure, you know, that, "Are we doing this right?" I called our attorneys. So yeah, it's, we're all involved, I talked to some of the board members. That's how we do things. But the point is, how independent, and again, I'm not attacking their decision, I'm not attacking them personally. It's that, had we all been there, we could have all been making presentations. I'd have asked a lot of questions, "Well, how's this compare? What about this?" So it really didn't happen that way. And, you know, information in, you get the result. If you don't get the information, you don't get the results. And that's part of what I see the problem, that it wasn't fully independent and wasn't fully vetted with two one-hour meetings, right? Our budget is fine, so it would...
They inquired about that and our township manager was at the meeting, so yes, that...
Yeah, well, no, no, you're not $17 million in debt, so let's stop. We have, every community, you have a mortgage on your house. I wouldn't go around and say, "You're $200 million in debt," or $200,000 in debt. It's a mortgage. So every community, we borrow big-ticket items because we get very low interest rates, it's better than using money and it's stretched over a long period of time. We're far under any other community, way under, by tens of millions of dollars. That's how good we are. So, we are actually, we have a surplus, I said. You know, you could have said, "We got $20 million in a rainy day fund, 15 in a general account." That's a better indication of where we are. And at some point, I asked the accountants, "When do we stop? When do we have enough?" You know, you don't just want to keep saving money for saving money's sake. If it's not paying a benefit, it's your money. What do we do with it? There's roads that got to be done. Now we're at a good level. We were told last year, you know, the accountant's always want more. I mean, they, but they said, "You're really at a good level compared to every community." So now our impression is, alright, we don't have to do that anymore. Let's speed up the funding of different programs. Let's use money from roads. We don't get road money from the state because we're a township, we don't own the roads.
The county.
Right, the county again, sorry, the county. So that kind of, we would love to be, get that money and we could handle it ourselves. We're very comfortable what we could do, but we don't get it. So we come up, we scrap and scrape and come up with ways of coming up with money to do that. Well, now we've got more money because we don't have to save that rainy day fund. But to say we're $17 million in debt, that's an okay thing. There are communities 60, 70 million and they're healthy, right? So don't confuse that. It's like me saying to you, "You've got $200,000 in debt. It sounds like you're a deadbeat, but no, you have a mortgage. You pay your bills, everything's fine." So, that's my concern. It wasn't presented, I would have presented, I would have had a lot of questions if I would have known that we're going to be active in this at those two one-hour meetings. I'd have had the same questions and more, right? Could we afford it? Yes. I mean, I'm not for it because I have, you know, I just don't, for the reasons I stated. But can we afford it? Yes, we can afford it. And it's not going to be a tax increase, nothing like that. But do I think it's right? No.
Through the chair. So everybody on this board had the opportunity to, if they chose to go to the meeting, could speak to the Compensation Commission if they chose to do so. You could present something, you could give some parameters, you could give a list. There was a packet provided by the supervisor, so the supervisor provided a packet. The clerk's office provided a packet as well to the Compensation Commission. So everybody on the board had an opportunity. And the packet that was provided by the clerk's office also addressed all the positions on the board. It talked, it presented the numbers from, I think we went back to, we went back to 1992 with the numbers. It took a long time to find all that data. But we presented all the salary, the Compensation Commission, the notes, the minutes, the agendas, everything from 1992 to the Compensation Commission. And in those notes and in that chart that was provided, that Excel spreadsheet, it addressed the trustees, it addressed the supervisor, the clerk, the treasurer. So it was, it was not a bias, it was, all the information was there. And I've had residents ask for that packet and they've gotten that packet and they were able to look at that information for themselves. And I've had residents call me afterwards and say, "Wow, this is all the information?" Yes, that's all the information. Wow, I can see, you know, what the board is, or what the Compensation Commission, how they got to the numbers they got to, right? And so, everybody had the opportunity to go there. And there were board members at the meetings and...
To the chair. I'd like to direct my thoughts to the previous supervisor, who I felt done a fine job here in the township. And if he was sitting in the township or in the supervisor's chair right now, I'd be all in favor of him receiving a raise. He did a fine job. He's also responsible for me losing money. He was spearheading a program to reduce employee healthcare costs.
The whole board was, Mr. Killian, if I can emphasize that.
I lost, I was getting a buyout.
I know.
And I don't think everybody was getting a buyout.
Correct.
And matter of fact, I don't know of anybody else that lost their buyout other than me. And I still felt that, you know, that was the best thing to do. And I didn't hold any animosity towards Ed when he made that decision. But I feel betrayed now that he's not in that position to ring a bell or get on the horn and gather all these troops together to lambaste the previous board that you were a member of and we did great things together. I just, I feel like it's sour grapes. And I feel other members, including the treasurer and especially the clerk, the clerk's duties have increased double from what they were a few years ago. Not only has their wages stagnated and stayed the same, but their duties have doubled. And I don't know if the previous clerk was privy to an opportunity like he got to become manager, if he'd still want to be clerk because of the responsibilities that are bestowed on the clerk's position. And Sheri, I know she's going to do a good job in her position. And I don't want to see another 20 years go by without any kind of wage increase. I think it's, it's perhaps little overinflated. Some people would laugh at that saying, "A little." But it's a long time overdue, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Through the chair, I just had, Mr. Eberth, you mentioned that, did you say you weren't aware of the Compensation Commission meetings?
No, I was aware, I wasn't aware of the presentations. First, I thought it was an independent commission. And this is why I apologize to the citizens. I guess I didn't pay it close enough attention. I thought it was independent that they would do the work. I wasn't aware that materials were given. I didn't see the materials until they were given to me recently. So, it didn't even occur to me that make a presentation. I wouldn't have, I might have been there to make sure what was being said and how it was being presented and speak what I, like I'm doing now to them. I certainly would have been there, but I had no idea, you know, Marine, that you were going to make a presentation. No, we talked, the three of us, but even things in your office, which I appreciate, you'll call me and say, "What do you think of this, Mike?" And I like that, because two heads, three heads, seven heads are better than one. But I heard nothing of this. I was shocked, like, it was a presentation and materials handed out and it sounded very driven, like, "Well, this is what I want." And you may deserve something, you know, we can agree to disagree on that, but... And I get, you know, what Mr. Killian said, you know, 20 years, you know, especially with the trustees, and is it going to be another 20, 50, 70? It's always hard when you consider this. But I felt, citizens say they weren't aware, I didn't feel as aware as I normally am. People call me on all kinds of things that I wish I wasn't involved in, right? Little things, the size of the garbage cans, you know, I'm getting phone calls like, "Okay, well, let's talk about the size of garbage cans." But this was like radio silence. I did get one email from the supervisor's office on the first one from your...
I think we sent the agendas to the whole board in the backup.
And I was working, I'm an attorney, I couldn't be there, but I felt no reason to be there because it was, it's going to be independent. And I did have questions. And I was going to talk to Mr. Peters, our manager, like, "How's this work exactly? Just fill me in." But it happened so quick. It was a one-hour meeting followed by another one-hour meeting and, you know, it's like...
I'd just like to clarify, Mr. Eberth, that was the commission's decision.
I get that.
Okay.
And I didn't know, like, even that shocked me, you know, it's like, once I realized that, I'm looking closer at the statute and ordinance, I, "Well, wait, wait a minute. This is like, takes a life of its own." So, I'm not faulting anyone because they had, there hasn't been a raise. But again, we did get in here and I'm going to retire, I could use more money. I'm going to, I have no pension. I retire on my savings this year. December, I'm done. My firm is going to my partner and the other attorneys and I'm out the door. So I could use money. But I didn't take this job, like Sheri said, she couldn't be her eight hours a day because her family would starve because she's got a job that pays the bills and this is, she's here when she needs to be. She gets calls, we talk on the weekend. God knows Sheri's called me at 7:00 in the evening and we had long calls. That's just the business, right? It happens. But I didn't, you know, I didn't make a presentation. I certainly would have been there to speak like I'm speaking to the audience here and the people watching on TV. "What about this? Did you look at this? Why not this? Is it part-time or full-time?" And I understand what you're saying about part-time and full-time, but I'd have brought up a lot of issues had I known we were going to make presentations of some sort. I didn't know, I didn't understand that, that's, I blame myself for that too. I, you know, buck stops with me a lot of times. And that's why I can't support this, I just felt it's not fully vetted. So that's the reason.
I was just going to say, so, the Compensation Commission is looking at the positions. They're not looking at the people because these, the numbers that they came up with, these numbers stand until they meet again, right? And then they can, if they meet again in 2027, they say either we got this right, you know, or we didn't get this right, maybe this, whatever. Who knows?
Can I interrupt you? Mrs. Hears, what are you shaking your head about? What are you saying? I'm sorry, I said we wouldn't do this, but I see her shaking her head and I'm just...
Because I was, because I, is it on?
Yes, yes.
Because I was a former board member, I know all the procedure when it comes to the Salary Compensation. They can only meet in the odd year. The decision, if they make the, if you make this decision to accept what they've given you in 2027, they can't reduce your current salaries, but they can reduce them for 20, the fiscal year 2029. It's a two-year cycle.
But she said that earlier.
I know, but...
Yeah, they cannot reduce the salaries of sitting board members.
Correct.
Right.
Okay. There's just some things being set up here that are not true, that are not law.
What do you mean by that?
I would, you know, I'd rather not discuss that. You people feel you got educated on this, you've got something moving forward at your next board meeting, and I'll address it then, thank you.
I do have a question though. Are we, and this is maybe to the attorney, because I don't know that we know the answer. Are we permitted to send it back to the commission just so once they make their final, we're done?
Actually, we have till February 11th.
February 11th, April 11th.
I'm sorry, God, I'm way behind. Yes, April 11th. No, if they want to re, if they want to meet again and give a recommendation prior to April 11th, that can be done. That's my understanding, that's what I was told. Okay.
Can you confirm that for us, please? Alright, thank you.
Well, I guess they...
Something was filed with the clerk's office. Are we talking about numbers that we've been discussing here for a while? Because I haven't seen those numbers. I haven't seen anything from the commission. Everything that I've heard has come from the gentleman who used to hold this seat, who put it on the internet and the folks ran away with it, and it was untrue. So, if we're going to go forward, I would love to see some numbers because everybody's spitting out numbers, but I haven't seen those numbers. I haven't seen the recommendation in writing from the commission. So, it's hearsay, if you ask me. And all of these, and all of these folks that are upset should wait until we have all of the pertinent information as it relates to the decision that was made by the commission. I have not seen it. I have not seen anything. Everything that you folks have been talking about has been spe...
Everything that you folks have been talking about has been speculation to me or internet information. I showed up at one meeting for 15 minutes at the end. I don't even know what happened at that meeting except for I asked the clerk to put it on the agenda. So that you folks would know because I did feel that the public was not fully aware. But I do stand behind the clerk and putting the information out, posting it where it should be. And the gentleman who said he found it over at the community center was one of the places we posted it at because that's where our residents visit. So when we say we're not being transparent, we are. The reason why we have computers now or laptop computers is because we're going paperless. And, and going paperless saves the township money. It saves all of us money. So if we can get to what the commission actually said and was written, and I can read that, then I can have an answer for you or maybe answer some of the questions and we can shut out some of this misinformation that has been floating around. Also, in 1973, I started working. I paid into social security. Spent 26 years on the police department. All I know is public service. When I came to Brownstown, excuse me, I saw things that I didn't like. So I got involved. I said, maybe I can get on this board or maybe I can get on this, find out about this or find out about that. But never once was it about Steve Allen. It was about this community. It was about transparency. It was not my photo on a picture or if in fact I was brought in money. Because as a board, that's a decision we all make. It's not one individual. One individual might want to take credit for it, but one individual does not make those decisions. So when I see the information from the commission in writing that the clerk's office has, that they say they have, I'll be more than happy to ask a whole lot of questions as to what actually happened at that meeting and where we're going. My personal income is my personal income. You can look in the record. It's there. I earned the pension because I worked 26 and a half years. I earned the pension. But I give this township 100% of my time. Not one day a week, not five minutes, 100%. As do the other trustees who show up and board members who show up. I find it highly insulting that an individual who was unable to be elected would come in and say all of these nasty things about the individuals who have been working for you. It is our job to service you because this community and what we do is provide service. It is not personal. It's never personal for me. I made more money when I was the ordinance officer than what I make now. Because I saw a blight issue and I wanted to get on that. But now, when someone wants to, I'm done.
Can we go back, Mr. Foley, to, to what you said about the clerk receiving the information? Is there a document that the, the commission should have signed and submitted to? I, I'm, I don't under, that's, I'm lacking that. So they gave you something? After the second meeting?
So the question was posed, and I, I'll read it. The clerk's staff attended and recorded documents, recorded and documented the actions of the Compensation Commission, just like we do every other meeting. That's how we, we get our minutes, right? And the minutes of the, the compensation meeting, just like every other commission and board, are available eight business days from that meeting. They are available to the public as a draft. Then they are approved at the next meeting of that commission. Section 48, I'm sorry, section 4B is met with the commission's filing with the clerk since they made a formal motion to increase salaries and the motion passed and the minutes were taken by clerk's staff. Since the meeting was held on Tuesday, March 11th, does this mean the 30 days effective date will be Thursday, April 11th? And the legal response from our counselors was yes. So by the clerk's staff taking the minutes, the Compensation Commission had a motion, they had a second, they voted on it, the motion carried. They asked the township manager if they needed to do, to do anything else. They were told no. They filed that with the clerk. The minutes are right here. They are available on our website and they, they are right here.
And they approved the minutes?
They, they haven't met.
They haven't met. So the, the minutes are, it says these are the recommended salaries through 2027 in accordance with the Brownstown Ordinance 319 until the commission reconvenes for the next review. They took a roll call, they voted, the motion carried. So this is in writing, this is what we have.
The question is, the clerk's office, because they do the minutes, right? Is that a submission by the board? And if it is, if they haven't approved it, is that qualified? The commission, I'm sorry. Yeah, but they don't have to do a separate writing saying, we hereby find, okay.
All right, that's.
So we're okay with it on the agenda. We're within the time limit, it sounds like, if that's the date, okay, we are.
And that, and that was March 11th?
Yes, so the.
So that's what you're saying, 30 days from that, March 11th?
And see, that's part of Mr. Allen's concern because how do we not know that? How do we not say this is their submission? And, you know, as board members, uh, Mr. Allen, because I know he called me and I yelled at him, he had nothing to do with this, but he was the mysterious person I talked to first and then I had apologized to him because I, he was the first one. But they all called. But so that's where we were in the dark is that, okay, this is the official submission and now the clock's ticking. It becomes, so you know, it, it, there was some, I mean, admittedly, there is, it, we didn't know that. I didn't know it. No one else did. And we just found out today that's considered the official submission. All right.
We've let a couple of people. The attorney might kill me after this meeting. Yeah, yeah, you can do that too.
You stated that the Compensation Commission cannot consider healthcare. I understand that's correct. But you can. And I'm always going to speak up, Patrick. It doesn't, doesn't matter whether I'm sitting up there or sitting down here, I'm always going to speak up. And the negotiations or the conversations that we had were concerning healthcare to reach fiscal responsibility. Now you, it keeps, it keeps being brought up about 20 years and about inflation. There's only one person up there who's been there 20 years. So this idea that the inflation and 20 years applies to everybody, it does not. And when you talk about part time and full time, here's where the difference is made. Difference is made whether or not that person considered full time has a deputy clerk, whether they have a township, township manager.
That is not accurate.
Well, I saw some of the people up there on the board that you're comparing to, and they are full time without a manager. Some of them are. Okay, but.
Up here, you, you say there are.
No, the, the numbers that were put on the board.
All right, I'm sorry, I'm trying to understand what you said. Don't, you don't need to be defensive.
But, but I call Van Buren Township. Van Buren Township is full time without a Brian Peters.
Then that is their decision to have a deputy supervisor, not a department. Excuse, Mr., Mr. Smith, under the statute, the clerk and the treasurer must have a deputy. If the supervisor would like a deputy, they can ask the board. If the supervisor gives up that deputy position, a township manager or superintendent can be appointed. This board, well, not this one, chose to hire a township manager for all seven of the board members.
The video of the Compensation Commission, if you want to see it, Mr. Allen, is posted for the second meeting that you came in 15 minutes. I was the only person from the public there. And part of that was because most of the public isn't paying attention or they don't know. But the thing is, where the Compensation Commission can't consider healthcare.
No, they can't.
You can.
And we've, we've done that in the past.
You can, and I'm not advocating. Mike's quite correct. I'm not advocating taking healthcare away from anybody. I'm not cruel. I wouldn't. I know what some of the health conference, uh, compromises some people have had. So that's not it. And I've said before, that was a promise made, that promise ought to be kept, but don't act like you don't have it. Don't act like the, like the citizens are paying for it. They are paying for it. And it, there is a cost associated with it. So when you add your salaries and you don't add the healthcare, that's not right. When you're not adding, when you're not adding the cost, the additional cost that taxpayers are paying, it's not right. That's all I'm saying.
The statute states what it does.
But you can't consider that when you vote.
Yes, I think what, uh, Mr. Smith is saying is that if you compare it to the other communities, we have, if we have health insurance for the elected officials, add that to our number because it, if we're under and it's truly, let's say it's completely accurate and it's under, well, then it really brings it up. Now, the commission can't do, they can't do that, but were they aware of that? I mean, that's part of the vetting. Did we say, well, you know, we get this, they don't, right? Oh, well, let's lower it by whatever dollars. And, and I think that's the point. It's a valid point. They can't take away the insurance and none of us are advocating for it because as, as Mr., our supervisor said, he said, uh, promised medicine, promised cap because we can afford it. We're not looking to do that, but it's part of the consideration with the wages. And I don't know that they knew that. And that's where they say we deserve more. I, I do. And, and I can disagree, but I think the amount they recommended, I think there was an error and I, I just don't accept for the trustees.
Through the chair, I just wanted to, um, I know some board members have said that they didn't get anything in writing, but this was emailed to every board member on March 20th.
I don't think that they're saying that they didn't receive anything. I, like, I think Mike and I thought we were going to get a resolution or something like that. I'm, I was not aware that those minutes were the, what do we call it? Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's just, just for the residents, you know, this was emailed to everybody on March 20th. Everybody was made aware of those numbers. Their minutes.
I don't know what you're voting on because there's no paper on the website. So then you're free to say whatever you think. We think you're voting on because there's nothing public that says that you're voting on. And I think also certain of your points, some people at different positions get a car. You get a car with insurance and gas paid for, that's part of your compensation package. Depending on which power you get, it may be worth a lot.
Now, now, for the record, because citizens here, they get cars. We don't get cars. Yeah, I, I want to make that clear.
No.
Only. I got it, yeah.
If I can interrupt, when it's put on the agenda, every board member should receive a copy of those minutes from the Compensation Commission stating what they recommend. We, that meeting won't be until two weeks. No, April 7th. So we haven't even received the information. Right.
This was sent to everybody.
Once the commission is formed, you have.
Yeah, Ms. Harris, you, I get what you're saying. We could have had a work session to talk about doing this. But, but you know what? That's the problem. Raising my girls, there are all kinds of decisions we made that, looking back, they're adults now, we would have made, we would have made different decisions because you make it, you think you're doing the best thing and then you say, wait a minute, perhaps. And they informed me too, like my wife, they all picked up their moms, informed me, remember you did this? And it's like, that was a wrong decision. So if I had a crystal ball and said, this is where we'd be all of us, I think we would have said, let's do a work session first and talk about how we go about it. But we did what we thought was best. I don't criticize that.
And I think that that's what.
And, and if you notice, every board meeting, we do have now work sessions. If there's something to discuss now, we, we didn't years ago, but we had them, but not regular. Every board meeting, there's a five o'clock. If there's something anybody wants to discuss, we put it on there, like, hey, we don't get this. But in your case, what you're saying, we thought we did understand it clearly, there had more discussion. Right, right. Right.
Right.
Not accept them, we, we would vote against it. Yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanted to.
Same effect though. Correct.
No, no.
No, but here's, I haven't gone to the super, I haven't gone to supervisor or our, our attorney. When you do an ordinance, and we did the ordinance in November, we can, one year later, we can get rid of, we can change that. We could get rid of the ordinance. We get rid of the commission. And then the decision on wages rests on our shoulder again. So we could revisit this. We could wait a year, get rid of the ordinance, we don't have a commission. And then this would be late next, late this year, right? Yeah, you got one year for. No, if you have a commission.
Through the, through the chair.
All wage increases?
I, I believe the commission was established for a, for a, for a five-year in ordinance. We have the commission established, so.
You can change ordinances after a year.
If I may.
Well, I said I, I'd have to, I haven't talked to the supervisor or the attorney.
Mr. Foley, what would, Mr. Foley?
If I may, under the ordinance and under state statute, uh, one year after this ordinance was put into effect, it can be rescinded or changed regardless of how many people were appointed and their terms.
Okay.
Thank you.
Quickly, because we're pressing our luck here.
You know, when there's this much, I've served on a number of boards and number of things. In here, hospital boards, so forth, where there's this much hang about doing something and you don't have, even through the board, unanimous in which opinion that this. this is a good thing. On the boards I've served on, the president goes, you know, you should pause. Because if we're not united, it's going to splinter through, it could, it could certainly splinter yourself and the public. And when you have this much uncertainty about both the process and what's being asked, it is often a wise idea, my father said, to pause and rethink what you're doing. And, and all it does is put things off for, what, nine, nine months? Nine months.
Thank you.
Then you have plenty of time to kind of line it up, get it right, and sell.
Thank you. Clerk breaker, did you have some?
I did, I just wanted to say one more thing. So I, I fully believe in the, the board and the seven people sitting up here have the ability and the, and the right to, um, vote no on the recommendation from the compensation commission or vote yes on it or accept it, however, now we're, it's going to a vote. Um, but I, I, I would just like to speak to the board and say, take some time and think about things. Um, you have the right to vote no, you have the right to vote yes. I think it would be detrimental to this board and this township to cherry pick positions and choose you get a raise, you don't. I think that that, we're advocating or, or not advocating, we are presented with compensation, um, numbers or compensation wages for the position, not for the people. Okay? So if you take the people out of that, we're, we are being presented with that. It can get personal, right? And I think cherry picking and saying, well, you get a raise, but you don't get one and you don't, and can open the door for dishonesty and corruption. Because if you have five or six people on the board that don't like one person, and I'm not saying that's the situation now, but you don't know where we're going to be next year, two years, four years, you don't know. It allows the board to gang up. And we've seen it in, in bordering communities. We've seen boards split and three people will say no to one person all the time, et cetera. I think doing that is, is a terrible idea. You have the right to vote yes, you have the right to vote no. But I think cherry picking and saying, you yes, you no, you yes, you no, is a terrible example to set for our residents. And, and it, and it, I would have a hard time sitting next to Mr. Allen and working with him if I sat up here and said, well, Supervisor Breeze and I and, and Trustee Chapman are getting a raise, but you're not getting a raise. I couldn't do that and I won't do that to my board members and I won't do that to the residents. So, and the very last thing I have to say, I know people are tired, but, so my office has been working diligently to be transparent and provide all information that is being requested. I've been getting a ton of requests. Um, that being said, in order to comply with our strict and diligent record keeping policies, all future requests must comply with the Freedom of Information Act, um, as our policy is in place so that we are treating everyone the same. I don't want people saying to me, well, you responded to me in two days and you responded to him in one day. Everything has to be a FOIA from now on, just to make it fair across the board. That's all. Thank you.
Any other comment from the board? Is there a motion to adjourn? Oh. Are you making a motion, Mr. Chapman? Nice to hear from you. Thank you. Uh, support? Nice to hear from you. Jones. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.